And just as a reminder, if everyone would please turn off their cell phones completely, so it doesn't interrupt with what our folks listening to the phone can hear. You all withstand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state where it stands, to the beautiful peninsula united by a bridge of steel, where equal opportunity and justice for all is our ideal.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherpas, Spohman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Einherz?
Yes.
Mayor Felton?
Here. We need an approval of the motion to approve the agenda. There's going to be an amendment tonight to add a couple of things here.
All right, I'll make a request or a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add a banner request under Communications and a closed session item to discuss pending civil litigation regarding Myring Company LLC versus City of Cadillac Planning Commission, case number sixteen dash two-nine-six-seven dash A W.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Einherz?
Yes.
Sherpas, Mayor Felton?
Yes, motion carries. This time we'll open the floor for public comments. We do ask if you come forward, if you'd limit your time to three minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we have the minutes from the January twenty-fourth special meeting and then also the minutes from the closed session that was held on January twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Einherz?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Felton?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, and that takes us to the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening's public hearing is with respect to an ordinance that amends our fee schedule, but what it really does is it provides the ability for the city to administratively make adjustments to utility bills with respect to late fees. The ordinance section that we're looking at adding currently reads in the following way. "Notwithstanding the foregoing, if a regular user has paid its charges on a timely basis each month for a continuous twelve-month period, then the utilities department may waive one late fee per continuous twelve-month period, but such waiver is permitted only if the regular user charges are paid within three business days after the applicable due date." It's important that I mention to city council that subsequent to this item being set for a public hearing today and potentially for council consideration and approval, the city staff would like to recommend a small change. That change would actually be to strike the last portion of the very last sentence, so that it would simply read, "Notwithstanding the foregoing, if a regular user has paid its charges on a timely basis each month for a continuous twelve-month period, then the utilities department may waive one late fee per continuous twelve-month period." Period. The reason why is because it's certainly plausible that somebody may not even recognize or realize that they missed a payment, especially if they have their payment on an auto pay or some other regular automatic type system that maybe runs awry. You know, they're a great customer, they don't have any problems. They're not going to know, perhaps for a month, that they've even, yeah.
So it's free business.
Yeah, so we just want to strike, the recommendation time would be to just strike that last, yeah, the three-business-day portion and to simply approve this amendment as I mentioned, as I amended it, by eliminating it, literally ending it after the words.
And if they have a debit card and all of a sudden it expires and you have to make the correction?
Or they have--
Change of banks?
Yeah, change of banks, or they have third-party processors that work on behalf of their company, and there could be a whole multitude of reasons as to why--
Not that I request that, but it's a change.
Right, we went through that. Yeah. Yes, okay. Do we have a motion, do we have a public hearing? Oh, we do have a public hearing.
We're in the--
Sorry, had a long day.
Yeah.
So, at this point, we'll go ahead and open the floor for the public comment portion of the hearing. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion. Is there any further discussion on that?
Oh, you know, like I said last time, I think this is a great idea. I mean, it honors those people who are good, regular users, without hitting them with a fee that, you know, is pretty much a nuisance or nasty when they have to pay it to their customers. I like that we're doing this, we're giving our staff the authority to do this.
I agree. Do we need to just say that with the changes noted, that you do it? Okay, then I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance twenty-seventeen dash zero-two to amend utilities ordinance to provide prompt payment incentives with the changes made striking that part after twelve-month period. Support.
Councilmember Einherz?
Yes.
Sherpas, Spohman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Mayor Felton?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. Evening, we have a community spotlight.
Yes, we do. Yes, sure. Carrie Thompson, the director of the Cadillac-Rexford Transportation Authority, is here this evening. Carrie, I think this is your second time coming with--
Second or third?
Second or third, yep, to give us an update on the CWTA operations.
All right. Do I have to talk into this, people can hear? See if I can get it short enough for me. There we go. Okay. So, I just wanted to come and give everyone an update. It's been since, I guess, last February or so since I've been here, so we have made a lot of changes in the last two years, especially in the last year, and my board and I, about two years ago, held focus groups for the community, and we have been slowly, well, I guess not really slowly, in the last eighteen months, we've checked almost all of those things off that the community has asked for. And so, we are continuing to move through that master plan, and I just wanted to let you guys in on what we're going to be doing over the next year. Did it move? No? Where do I point it? Sandy?
Right at Sandy. Are you doing it?
Oh, okay. I guess it worked then. So, just to recap on our vision and master plan, the community had asked for a more dependable service from us. This last March, we launched a brand-new computer software that has allowed us to do that. Our ridership is actually through the roof right now. In December, we were about fourteen percent higher than we were the previous December. So, that's over eleven thousand rides in one month. I think it was eleven thousand four hundred, and that is an all-time record high for Cadillac-Rexford Transit. No matter what the year was, that's a high for us. We also launched Night Rider. One of the things the community asked for was night and weekend service. We found a grant to be able to do that and brought back just under a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to Rexford County. It was a state and federal grant, which means we didn't have to use any mileage money to make that happen. So, we're really lucky to be able to do that, and so we now run until midnight, Monday through Friday, and on Saturdays from nine until five. Our Saturday service has been more successful than we thought was possible, to be totally honest, this quickly. A lot of times, transits take a little bit of time to warm up with service like this, and we're transporting anywhere between one and two hundred people in the evenings, and we're actually hitting capacity during the week, and on Saturdays, we're hitting capacity almost every single Saturday. So, we're transporting between seventy and ninety people on Saturday with a very small number of vehicles. So, we're really excited about that. The other thing we're doing right now is, for the first time ever, we have really great data to start looking at ridership and trends in our ridership, and how many people are on our buses at one time, and all of those great things. So, we've found that while we're picking up more people than ever, there are certain times during the day and in the evening where we probably only have three riders on a bus at a time, two or three people. And so, we've been looking at what I call right sizing our fleet, so looking at a little bit smaller vehicles and what kind of savings we can have from those fuel mileage, and I'm going to show you what is going to arrive this week for us. Well, I should also mention, because people ask me this all the time, our on-time percentage now, we're actually looking at that, and we are at ninety-five percent the last month. So, that is relatively unheard of in a transit, so we're really excited about that. So, this is our brand-new MV1, except it's now red, I promise, we're not changing the color. It's just going to be white, and it actually is going to arrive this week. It is a really nice vehicle. It's built in the same plant as Hummer, it's very solid. We went down to Grand Rapids, and I took a driver with me so they could tell me about, you know, what it's like to push somebody in and those kind of things, so I make sure it's practical for them. That is our approach we are taking across the board, is I really have a lot more driver and dispatcher interaction than ever before, because they're the experts, not me, so I bring them to these kind of things. So, you can see it holds three people in the back and then the wheelchair in the front. That ramp that you see, right there, it is literally a push-button ramp. There is absolutely no rattle, I was very impressed by that. I don't know if any of you have ever been in a public transit vehicle with a lift. It folds up, and no matter how great that lift is, it does do some rattling in the back. This doesn't do any of that, because it goes right into the floor. It has a short and a long deployment, and so you just literally touch a button and you can tell it's short or long, and the neatest part about this vehicle is it goes, the ramp goes straight out and then lowers and self-levels. So, it can literally go over a curb, over the grass, and onto a sidewalk before it self-levels and lets people on, which is wonderful. So, we just ordered one of these, and you can see the short and long deployment. We ordered one of them, because that's what we had grant funding to do, so we're going to see how we like this. This coming fall, we have additional grant funding. It will either be this or a Ford Transit, so we're really looking to minimize the size of some of the fleet. That's not to say we won't have big vehicles, because I will tell you, I just pulled video this morning on one of our runs that does the YMCA, and we literally had thirty kids on board. So, we do need those bigger vehicles, but we don't need them the entire day, and so where we can, we're going to try to put them on the road to save some money. We did a few cost projections on what this vehicle would save us if we put it on some of our regional routes to go a little bit further, and we're looking at between six and eight thousand dollars a year. So, that's huge for us, and that's something we've been looking at pretty much consistently over the last two years.
Does it save you also like gas mileage?
Gas mileage, yep, absolutely, because the bigger vehicles, they get maybe six to eight miles a gallon. We have a couple that do a little bit more, but you can see this one combined with city and highway is eighteen. That's really good for any kind of transit vehicle. It's got a very sturdy frame, it's actually built, I think it's at over ninety percent built here in the USA, which is wonderful. It beats our, or it meets our BiAmerica standards with the state, so it should be a pretty great vehicle. Looking ahead, so there's a couple of big things that we are going to launch this year, and you are going to see them. One is, we have a phone system that's freely antiquated, so I feel like in the last two years, we've come a really long way with technology, but we have a phone system, literally if you call in and you're the fourth caller, you're going to get a busy signal, which is silly in two thousand seventeen. So, we have a grant, it's actually a federal grant, to pay for this phone system. So, we are going to be looking into that this year, and then we're going to also be continually looking at our system and making improvements with our new software. Branding buses, so this is kind of a hot topic for us right now. So, one of the things that the community asked for was an updated image. They said we looked like we were from the nineteen eighties, which I completely agree with. So, we have right now, as you've all seen, green buses, dark green stripe, CWTA across the side. A lot of times, I'll say, I work for CWTA, and I get a blank look, and I'll say Cadillac-Rexford Transit Authority, and then they kind of look at me like, oh, maybe I know what that is, and then I say, the green bus, and they go, oh, yeah, yeah, we know what that is. So, we definitely need to do a little bit on our branding. This is not a total rebranding, we will always be Cadillac-Rexford Transit Authority, that'll be our legal name, but there are many transits in the industry that have very long names, like the Service in Grand Rapids is the Inner Urban Partnership Connection, there's about six more, and they're called the Rapid. That's what you see on the side of their bus. And so, we are looking at different options to put on the side of our buses. So, right now, we have vinyl on the sides, we're planning to keep the green for now, and we're going to have new vinyl graphics with a new name on the side. So, our process for doing that is very inclusive of everyone, which we're excited about. So, my board has looked at them all. We started with fifteen, we've narrowed it down to six, so they have ranked their top three. I'm doing that with, well, I did it with my management staff, and now I'm doing it with my employees over the next three days, so they all get to weigh in. Once we have our top three, then we'll bring it out to the public, we're going to have some surveys, we're going to put it online, and let the public weigh in on what they think the name on the side of the bus should be. So, we're excited to be able to do that. We've had really great community support, and we want to make sure this is a community transit and not just, you know, a closed-door operation, so we're working hard to be inclusive. And that's it. Any questions?
We've got a busy two years.
Yeah, it's been fun, actually, it's really fun. All right?
Well, glad you're doing it.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to communications.
I'm going to take this one. So, tonight, we have the partner in charge of our audit from Gay Bridge and Company, Grand Rapids, Joe Verlin. I think this is your third, so your third presentation to the city council, you've seen him a couple of times, and the audit report for fiscal year two thousand sixteen was released about six weeks ago, and so invite Joe to the podium.
Did you make graphics for Owen?
I have a couple of printed copies, if you'd like. Yeah, we sent out the electronic version.
I thought it was so many pages.
We can make-- I'll have one for you to take home with you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing us to be able to serve as your auditor, and very much is a pleasure to work with Owen and Carol. They do a wonderful job of providing the information that we request, as well as all of it, the city staff. Everybody's very cooperative, we ask for much of the information in advance, and it's all provided to us primarily electronically, and it's a very smooth and efficient audit process. There's one thing that is slightly unique with the city of Cadillac, and in the state of Michigan, local units of government are required to have their financial statements audited, and they are, there's an opinion letter attached, and they get uploaded to the Treasury website for public viewing, to make sure that there's a level of transparency. What Cadillac does, in addition to that, is they actually publish, the city publishes a comprehensive annual financial report, and what that means is the actual audit is submitted to Treasury, but in addition to that, there's also an introductory section that talks about significant achievements of the city and has some other useful information for the readers, and then on the back end of the report, there are statistical tables that show economic trends and tax revenues and things of that nature, and provide a very comprehensive amount of data for the city's constituents to take a look at and understand the trending performance of the city over time. And on page four, Roman numeral four of the audit report, it states that this will be the thirty-first consecutive year that the city has not only prepared a CAFER, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, but it submitted that CAFER to the GFWA, the Government Finance Officers Association, for what's referred to as a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So, not only does the city hold itself to that higher standard, but it actually submitted to the GFWA to get a third-party's blessing, or I guess maybe even a fourth-party's blessing, on those financial statements, just stating that these are consistent with all of the, you know, the governmental accounting standard boards, reporting requirements, and so on and so forth, and produced in a very readable manner. Thirty-one consecutive years, I think that really speaks a lot about the city, about the city's staff and the commitment to excellence in financial reporting. And just to give an idea of what that means, there are roughly five thousand local units of government in the state of Michigan, and there are less than one hundred that receive that certificate, so less than two percent of local units in government take those extra steps to really hold themselves to the higher standard, so it certainly means something to go that far. It's about a hundred and seventy-five pages, the entire comprehensive annual financial report, and the most important item in this entire report is, can be found on page five, that is where we publish our opinion paragraphs, and what we write is that, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly the financial condition of the city as of June thirty, two thousand sixteen, and that's referred to as an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. It's the highest level of opinion that we can render on financial statements, and that basically means that all the schedules that we received substantiated the financial statement, so the assets, the liabilities can be proven with third-party records, the revenues and expenditures all have supporting schedules to substantiate them, and accordingly, we issued an unmodified opinion. It should always be the city's goal to receive an unmodified opinion, but it certainly does mean something to achieve it. We've had larger organizations that have received adverse opinions or qualified opinions, but the city does a very good job, takes a lot of ownership and pride in its financial statements, and for that reason, we issued a clean opinion. Going through the rest of the audit report, if you take a look at page seven, this starts the management discussion and analysis section of the audit report, and I would think of this as being the Cliff Notes version of the entire audit. So, this is roughly ten pages of narrative that explain the financial highlights of the city during last fiscal year, the year ended June thirty, two thousand sixteen. It explains how the financial statements articulate to each other, how they relate to each other. You'll notice that there's all kinds of schedules and financial statements, and it's difficult to understand what, you know, what are each one of these statements showing, how come the numbers are, the equity numbers are slightly different. The M D N A explains the differences between those financial statements, and in addition to that, it shows two-year trend information. It's the only spot in the audit report where you can see what the revenues look like for each of the past two years, same with the expenses, assets and liabilities, just gives a good idea of what the trajectory of the city is for each of those past two fiscal years. So, starting on page seven, I'll walk through some of the financial highlights. The first bullet point shows that the net position of the city, and what net position is, it's the accrual basis of accounting. It means theoretically, if the city were to sell all of its infrastructure, if you could somehow sell the buildings, the streets, vehicles, all of its assets, pay off all of its bonds, and net pension liability and other liabilities, there'd be thirty-one million dollars left over. This is a very theoretical number, it doesn't mean there's thirty-one million dollars of cash sitting in a bank account, but it does represent a measure of equity that the city has, and over time, it's useful to see that number increasing just to show that the city has a sustainable operation. That number is actually a decrease of seven hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars. I would think that, in the corporate world, I would think of that as being a net loss for the year, but, and we'll see that really the biggest reason for that is the fact that the net pension liability increased from about three and a half million dollars all the way up to over five million dollars. That was certainly the largest contributing factor to it, and that number is a non-cash expense. So, while there was a decrease in net position for the year, there actually was an increase in cash, and over the course of time, that net pension liability number is going to settle down, and we should see a more smoother and normalized increase in net position for the long run. That second bullet point down, all the thirty-one million dollars of net position, one million nine hundred two thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars represents unrestricted net position. That number gives a much more, a much better idea of the true liquidity of the city. It backs off the long-term assets, it backs off streets, buildings, things that necessarily can't be used to pay wages or utilities or things of that nature. So, about one point nine million dollars is a more liquid number in terms of what the city's assets are as of June thirty, two thousand sixteen. That third bullet point down, first two bullet points on the accrual or the long-term basis of accounting, and third bullet point down, now we switch to the modified accrual basis of accounting. I would think of this as being cash-based, almost, so how many, what is the immediate level of assets that the city has that includes cash, receivables that get converted to cash within sixty days versus the immediate obligations of the city? And you can see that total fund balances of the city as of June thirty, two thousand sixteen are just under six point three million dollars. That number's an increase of five hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars, so I would think of that as being cash in versus cash out, and that shows an increase of five hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. When we look at a very short-term focus, the city had a significant increase in its fund balance, which is certainly a good sign. Of that five hundred fifty-six thousand dollar increase in fund balance, the general fund contributed one hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred twelve dollars of that increase. Major streets had another one hundred seventy-five thousand, and then the local streets had a one hundred eighty-three thousand dollar increase in fund balance. So, those are certainly the three largest funds in terms of the contribution to that overall increase in fund balance. The next bullet point, the fourth bullet point down, shows that the city continues to set aside fifteen percent of its general fund expenditures. It's earmarking those funds as assigned fund balance, just to make sure that there's enough set aside to cover the future operating expenses of, expenditures of the city. That next bullet point down, the fifth bullet point, shows that the general fund is assigned, and unassigned fund balances totaling two million thirty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. When we take that number and we look at, look at that number compared to the annualized expenditures and transfers out of the general fund, that's about thirty-one percent of the annualized general fund expenditures and transfers out. Government Finance Officers Association likes that number to be north of seventeen percent, generally speaking, in the state of Michigan. Most cities range anywhere from twenty-five to thirty percent, so to be at thirty-one percent in a very good spot, the city's fund balance as of June thirty, two thousand sixteen is in a very stable condition. And then that last bullet point, the sixth bullet point, shows that the total debt decreased by seven hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars, and that's primarily a result of the city just meeting its ongoing debt service obligations on its outstanding bonds. Next, if you turn to page eleven, this is, we're still in the management discussion and analysis section of the audit report. All the numbers included in these schedules are on the accrual or the long-term basis of accounting. Just a couple of quick rows that I wanted to point out. First, current and other assets, the very top row, show twelve point two million dollars of current and other assets as of June thirty, two thousand sixteen, compared to eleven point eight million as of June thirty, two thousand fifteen. Then, the very last row, the total net position of the city was thirty-one million eight hundred and fifteen thousand as of June thirty, two thousand fifteen, and again, we talked about the decrease in net position, down to thirty-one million sixty-seven thousand as of June thirty, two thousand sixteen. The biggest reason, if you look at the governmental activities, which is the very first column, as of June thirty, two thousand sixteen, there is a negative unrestricted net position of five hundred and three thousand dollars. That is a result of five million three hundred forty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars of net pension liability that the city had to recognize as of June thirty, two thousand sixteen. This is the year two now of the city's implementation of governmental accounting standard board statement number sixty-eight. As of June thirty, two thousand fifteen, the city recognized about three and a half million dollars of net pension liability, that number increased to about five point three million. There's a lot of different moving parts and pieces to that for you. Over the course of time, it is going to be fully funded, it will approach and become zero, but there was a one-year increase, and again, there's a lot of different moving parts and pieces. A lot of it primarily depends on market performance of the assets that the city has already set aside in its police and fire pension fund, as well as the MERS defined benefit pension plan. So, for that reason, there was an increase, it certainly did pull up expenses of the city, it's non-cash, the city doesn't need to cut a check for five point three million dollars, and it still has the full actuarial term of twenty-four years to get that fully paid into MERS and the police and fire pension plan. Next, if you turn to page twelve, we get a look at the comparative revenues and expenses of the city for each of the past two fiscal years, and just a couple of rows that I wanted to point out here. First, the second row down from the bottom, the operating grants and contributions as of June, or for the year ended June thirty, two thousand fifteen, there was about one point one million dollars of operating grants. That number increased all the way up to two million five hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the year ended June thirty, two thousand sixteen, and that is a result of the SAW, Sewer and Wastewater Grant, received from the state of Michigan for about one point three million dollars. And conversely, you can see an increase in public works expenses, about halfway down the report. Public works expenses in the two thousand fifteen total column, the very last column, were two point five million dollars in the year ended June in the year ended June 30, 2015. That number increased to just under $4 million for the year ended June 30, 2016, and that's primarily a result of that SAW grant, which is a pass-through grant. So, as revenues increase, the corresponding expenses increase as well. The other area that I wanted to show a very positive trend is the third row up from the bottom. Business-type activities in 2015 had an $8,000 increase in net position. That number increased to a $125,000 increase in net position for the year ended June 30, 2016. There's three reasons for that. First, the Wexford County landfill had increased charges from the city to the tune of about $93,000 during the year ended June 30, 2016. In addition to that, 2016 was the first year that the city charged penalties in late fees on its water and sewer bills. That generated $72,560 of additional revenues for the city's Cadillac last fiscal year. And lastly, there was additional rents that the city generated from, with the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. So, when we look at, not only the additional rents, but the decreased expenses that benefited the city by about $47,818 during the year ended June 30, 2016. So, those are the three biggest reasons for that overall increase in performance in business-type activities during 2016. Next, we get into the basic financial statements of the city. If you want to turn all the way to page 21 of the PDF, you can see the fund balance sheet. And just one quick thing I wanted to point out here, if you look at the general fund, which is the very first column, you can see that every element of fund balance is positive in the general fund. Then we have the SAW grant, which is a pass-through fund, so there's no assets or liabilities there. But then, the other governmental funds, which include major and local streets primarily, you can see that every amount of fund balance is positive. So, restricted and assigned fund balances, not only for the general fund, but across all of the city's funds are carrying a positive fund balance. And again, we see that all governmental funds, as of June 30, 2016, have $6,299,914 of fund balance. Next, if you turn to page 23, we get a look at the revenues of the city's governmental funds. So, we can see that the total revenues, we're on the modified accrual basis of accounting, so I would think of this as being cash in versus cash out during the course of the year. And again, you can see that the general fund had total revenues of about $6.6 million, compared to expenditures of about $6.2 million, and other $261,000 of transfers out, leading to a $172,000 increase in general fund, fund balance. And then, if you look at the very last column, total governmental funds had an increase in fund balance for the year of $556,441. So, very healthy increase in fund balance for the city. Next, if you turn to page 27, we get a look at the enterprise funds of the city. And this is a statement of cash flows that shows how much cash the city collected during the course of the year. Not necessarily revenue, but how much cash came in, and compared to cash out. So, anytime the city makes a payment on its long-term debt, and pays down those bonds, and the water and sewer fund primarily, those are not expensed, they're not showing up on the income statement, or the statement of revenues and expenses. But it still obviously represents cash out. And here, you can see that the cash flows from operating activities during the year ended June 30, 2016, the very third column over, generated $1,242,043 of cash flows. That's cash in for the charges for services compared to cash out to pay wages, contractors, utilities, things of that nature. If you look about seven, eight more rows further down, you can see that cash flows used in capital and related financing activities. In other words, any purchases of equipment, any payments on long-term debt, any interest payments on those bonds, that consumed about $1,274,369. So, basically, the cash flows from operations are enough to be able to cover the debt service needs and the infrastructure costs of its business-type funds. Altogether, the third row up from the bottom, in the total enterprise funds, you can see that $26,706 was a net increase in cash during the year ended June 30, 2016. So, basically, the charges for services are pretty much right on target with being able to cover the capital needs of the city's enterprise funds. Next, just a couple more items I wanted to point out. If you want to turn to page 63, we get into the footnote section of the audit report. There are various schedules that we need to include in order to conform with the new pension reporting standards. Page 63 shows what the net pension liability of the city is going to be over the next 24 years, for both the MERS and the police and fire retirement system. And we can see that if the market earns a rate of return of 8% on the MERS plan, so all the assets that have already been set aside in the MERS trust to cover those future pension obligations, $3,351,250 is going to be paid in, assuming a flat 8% rate of return. If the market does 1% better than expected, that 3.3 number decreases to $1,997,186. So, 1%, if the market does 1% better than expected, it's going to decrease total payments into MERS by about $1.35 million over the next 24 years. Conversely, if the market does 1% worse than expected, and only earns 7% rate of return, that number increases from 3.3 million to about 4.9 million. So, roughly a $1.6 million increase in payments to MERS over the next 24 years, if the market does worse than expected. On the police and fire retirement system, a future rate of return was assumed of 7.35%. If that's the case, $3,378,263 will need to be paid into the police and fire retirement system over the remaining actuarial term. If the market does 1% better than expected, that number decreases to $2,137,650, about a $1.2 million decrease in total payments. Conversely, if the market does 1% less than expected, that number increases to $4,848,000, about a $1.5 million increase in total payments over the actuarial term. Next, if you turn two more pages to page 65, you can see that, this is, just a quick snapshot of how the city's OPEB plan did. So, the retiree healthcare plan, there are various schedules that we need to put together for that. Altogether, there was about a $12,000 increase, I'm sorry, decrease in the city's OPEB obligation. So, over the course of time, those funds will need to be paid in to fully fund the OPEB plan. We've got some new pension reporting standards coming down the pipeline. The city has a couple more years before that needs to be fully implemented. But as of June 30, 2016, the general retirees actually have an asset of $8,516 when we look at the total payments into the OPEB plan versus the annual required contribution. And the police and fire retirees' OPEB plan has a $413,861, I'm sorry, that's an obligation, a liability. So, $413,861 liability, that's reported on the statement of net position to, for the police and fire retiree plan. Those are the highlights that I wanted to cover on this year's audit report, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Do you have recommendations at all? Anything that you've seen trending the online that we might get the attention to, or putting them somewhere that we should be?
I get that question a lot, primarily with regard to, you know, if there's, it's kind of an oxymoron, but extra cash, you know, I do have some clients that feel that they've got some extra cash, and they'll ask me frequently, you know, what should we do with the extra cash? Should we take that and pay down our pension obligations? Should we pay down OPEB? That seems to be a relatively hot topic right now, in terms of, you know, what can we do to, the city still has 23 years, 24 years to fully fund that pension liability. You have the ability to pay it down early, if you were so inclined, but at the end of the day, that's really best left to management and council to make those types of decisions. But I would say that's one that's been meriting an awful lot of attention with our clients right now, especially with the relatively new pension reporting standard. It's bringing a lot more transparency to what that long-term obligation is for our clients, and is getting them to think a little bit more on a long-term basis, in terms of how that's going to be funded, and what types of funding mechanisms are in place to make sure that those obligations continue to be met.
Thank you. Is it common to do all in two years compared to meditating?
Yes.
I kind of like it to go longer.
If you turn into the statistical section, there's actually 10-year comparative data. So, it's on the very back end of the audit report, so if you get to, for the sake of argument, roughly page 150 or so, you'll start seeing the, sure. I don't think most readers get quite that deep into it, but there is very useful information, if you want to see how the city's finances have progressed over the past decade.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for your report. It was really well done.
Glad to be here.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep. No problem.
I saw the color. I mean, it's looking a little cold here, though.
Yeah, because I got to go back to the recording. I'll do that tomorrow, though.
If Owen wants her copy of this other stuff.
No, I'm good.
Well, it really sounds like we're doing pretty well financially. And, you know, I know all of you do an amazing job handling all that, but I have to say too, that some of this is probably attributed to the management, Marcus. And I know that we have really tightened our belt, in terms of the number of staff we have here, and that makes a huge difference in our expenses. And that's probably what we're seeing over time, is a pretty healthy financial situation because of that.
It's part of it.
Thanks to all the staff who have to work so hard, and thanks to you for managing it well.
Boy, that, year after year, maintaining that 31 years, no pressure there, is there?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, you know, I think that's a pretty, pretty good feather in our cap, you know?
That is. That's truly amazing.
Yeah, Dale Walker started that when he was here, and, you know, kind of led that charge, and we've tried to keep it going ever since.
Do you see other cities that have that longevity with that?
I have not come across anybody that's had it that long. We have roughly a dozen clients that submit, maybe one or two have 10-plus years. I have one city that is, has done it 25 of the past 26 years, they missed one year. But other than that, you guys are definitely at the top of the list.
I think we're the second or third longest in the state, and these were basically from inception of the program. So, maybe we started in year two, and they started in year one, kind of thing, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
I will say, if I could just give some kudos to Owen. I have not personally been able to make it to International City Managers Convention in, I'll win five or six years plus, but when I was there, there were some financial folks that came up to me and said, "We know about Cadillac because we've used your CAFRA as a model in trying to put together ours," which goes right back to the finance department here, so.
That's great.
It's really a neat, it's a neat feather in the cap, is Owen, so. So, drive well down, Owen.
Well done.
Thank you again.
Sandy has got the next communication.
Yes, we received our request to approve the display of a banner at the Chestnut Street Boat Launch from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on February 18th, for the 26th Annual Golf on Ice for Special Olympics, and that's sponsored by Sons of the American League.
I make the motion to approve the request to display the banner at the Chestnut Street Boat Launch on February 18th, for the Special Olympics Golf on Ice.
Sure. Great. I'll support.
Councilmember Shippers, Spohman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon.
Yes. Motion case.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of John Isle to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on February 6, 2020.
I make the motion to approve the appointment of John Isle to the Historical District Commission for a three-year term to expire on February 6, 2020.
Good question. That's not a reappointment, it's an appointment? Do you remember this in front of us before?
For Mr. Isle?
Am I making that up?
Boy, I don't know.
And when I looked at his application, I mean, it looked really familiar to me, and I think the date on it was like 2014.
I know we did a reappointment, did we not, Sandy?
So, I wondered if maybe something happened to it, then that it didn't go through? I can't really remember, and it's not even good.
Offhand, I don't. I can, we can look, while I'm eating this, to see if we hand him up for something else, but I don't.
Don't remember the name.
Yeah. The application is on December of 2014.
It would have been on the 19th, perhaps, then? You met, I believe, on something like that?
Yeah, but this is 2014.
2014?
Yeah, you wouldn't remember, councilman?
No.
You weren't there then?
No.
It doesn't matter. I really thought somebody would just know and pull it out, but I have no reason not to vote for this. I just thought it was another part of the story that.
Yeah, it was received in January, January 8th, 2015.
Any of this making any sense? Did you just put the wrong date on it, you think?
There's wrong dates, if that's the case. So, it's on his application signature and on the receipt. Is this current?
I mean, it came in, I mean, it came in through Carrie, and I'm not sure who brought it in from staff, but it's from Carrie.
And Carrie pushed it over to you. Is it possible, you know, and I'm, councilmembers, I'm just speculating here for a moment, it's certainly possible that we had this application on file, and it went through being an opening on the commission, tapped into those that had been previously submitted, to then bring forward for appointment.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, is when you first applied, you thought there was an appointment, but then when we looked, there really wasn't, and now it's being forwarded again.
Right.
Well, I say let's keep him.
John boy the plan.
Thank you.
We might have passed him only once, but we won't.
We will not let him get away. Someone want to make that motion, did we?
Got it.
Got it, okay.
Your roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers? Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Motion Carrie. Welcome to John.
Mayor, members of the city council, we do have a resolution for your consideration this evening. This is a resolution regarding the redevelopment-ready community certification program that the city is in the midst of trying to obtain through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Just for reference to the public, it took us perhaps a year or a little longer just to put the application together to this program, which is more commonly known as the RRC program. While doing that, as an aside, the application process itself changed, and so, instead of kicking us out, the MDC allowed us to continue our submittal based off of two different applications. We did submit this, by the way, last fall for their consideration. We were advised, just a couple of days before Christmas 2016, that we also need a resolution of support from the city council, accordingly, in support of our application into the RRC program. By the way, this is a program that the city council has identified as a part of your goals and objectives, and so, we've been working, working hard and trying to get this through. Through passage of this resolution tonight, our application will then, at least to the best of my knowledge, be officially accepted, and will go through a very stringent review process. At the end of that process, I fully expect we're going to receive, perhaps, volumes of notes from the reviewer advising what policies need to be changed, what policies need to be implemented. They'll assign into the, uh, RRC program. By the way, this is a program that the city council has identified as a part of your, your goals and objectives, and so we've been working, uh, working hard and trying to get this through. Uh, through passage of this resolution tonight, our application will then, at least to the best of my knowledge, be officially accepted and will go through a very stringent review process. Uh, at the end of that process, I fully expect we're going to receive, um, uh, perhaps volumes of notes, uh, from the reviewer advising what, uh, policies need to be changed, what policies need to be implemented. Uh, they'll assign, uh, essentially a caretaker or somebody to help walk us through how to, how to get some of this done. It will definitely take, um, more staff time and resources to, to fulfill, but that's all a part of, of the process of going through this certification. It's been commented on by the MEDC that this is somewhat similar to, uh, ISO certification that industries go through, and this is something new that the state is facilitating for municipalities. Um, also important to note that in order to remain eligible for certain, um, MEDC programs, not all, but certain ones, um, municipalities that are defined by having a traditional downtown, such as Cadillac, must have, uh, their application in the hopper fire before October of twenty seventeen. And so I am happy to report that we'll be able to certainly meet that, that guideline, that threshold.
I move for adopt the resolution declaring in touch for work toward implementation of recommendations necessary to receive redevelopment-ready community certification in the Michigan Economic Development Corporation.
Support.
We do want to say thank you, because I know how much time this has taken, um, everyone to be able to get us ready for that. So this is exciting.
Councilmember Wolfile?
Yes.
Meinhardt?
Yes.
Shippers? Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Felton?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. We do have minutes, uh, from the Planning Commission and the Dog Park Advisory Committee that we can review on our, on our own, and at this time, um, we won't go ahead and open up the floor for public discussion because there's proof. Do you have anything, Sandy? Okay. Um, does anyone have anything for good of their order this evening?
I'm gonna mention this really quick. Um, we survived the NASF event this year. Uh, there were some challenges and some hurdles, um, but it was fun having it in our downtown. Uh, the staff, uh, involved, I, I must give public kudos to. There was a lot of time spent in trying to ensure the safety for everybody that attended, uh, the event, uh, a lot of overtime spent in trying to make sure that, that things went on okay. Uh, we will be working with event organizers as time goes on, uh, talking about what went well and perhaps what didn't, uh, in anticipation of making sure that in years to come, uh, the event, uh, goes off without a hitch. So I just wanted to say thank you, everybody.
Sounds like a good plan. I, I was, I remember when I read that there were snowmobiles on the pavilion.
That's one of the items that needs to be discussed.
It wasn't just snowmobiles, though, was it?
It was.
Vehicles?
Vehicles, ATVs, higher balloon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm starting to twitch now.
Well, let's not get her going. Okay, we do appreciate all the hard work, though, of, of that group, um, keeping that festival here in the community. Um, I think that next year, perhaps, if, and I don't know, maybe it's somebody from the council, but if we have a seat at the table and we have a better understanding of what's being planned, so that we can be a bit more proactive in, um, letting, uh, the staff members know if there's something we should be participating in or guiding, might be helpful.
It was a big change from where the festival has been done in the past, so I figured there'd be a few bumps in the road, but, yeah, there's some things that need to be taken care of, but.
You don't know what you don't know, you know?
That's right.
What it's new and different.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'd be happy to, yeah, and I'd be happy to do that, um, to help with that, just to keep that on track. Okay, anyone else? All right, if not, we need to go into closed session.
Uh, yes, uh, mayor members of the city council, at this time, I'd like the, the council to consider adjourned the closed session to discuss pending civil litigation regarding Meyer &amp; Company LLC v. City of Cadillac Planning Commission at all, case number sixteen dash two-nine-six-seven dash AW, for the reason that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the city's trial or settlement strategy.
All right, I'll make that motion to adjourn the closed session to discuss pending civil litigation regarding Meyer &amp; Company LLC versus the City of Cadillac Planning Commission, case number sixteen dash two-nine-six-seven, for the reasons as stated. Support.
Councilmember Meinhardt?
Yes.
Shippers? Bowman?
Yes.
Wolfile?
Yes.
Mayor Felton?